Good evening, welcome to the Tuesday, June seventeenth, Regular City Council meeting. That is DeStiles Elliott, will you please call roll?
Mayor Benjamin.
Present.
Councilmember Delira.
Here.
Councilmember Fagerin.
Here.
Councilmember Gaither. Councilmember Guido. Councilmember Parks.
Here.
Councilmember Weller.
Present.
Councilmember Wright.
Councilmember Wright and Councilmember Guido have expressed to be excused, I haven't heard anything from Tremaine yet, so I entertain a motion for excusing.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, moving on, before we get into community announcements, agenda item number six has been struck, we don't have that, we didn't receive that interlocal agreement in time, so we had put it on in anticipation, but we won't have it. Continuing on with mayor's community announcements, upcoming city hall closures of Pullman City Hall, Pullman Recreation Center, Pullman Aquatic Center, Neil Public Library and other Pullman administrative offices, we close for Juneteenth on Thursday, June nineteenth, and Independence Day on Friday, July fourth, emergency services will remain available. We have coming up this weekend, downtown Pullman Historic Walking Tour, this is the annual tours that they do, and this year, the Historic Preservation Commission Walking Tour will be Saturday, June twenty first, from five to eight PM in downtown Pullman. The theme for this year's tour, and I love this theme, is downtown disasters, so participate with tour, various locations of downtown Pullman that have been affected by fires, flood, or other disasters. The Historic Preservation Commission members will be on hand to discuss historic sites, starting at Cougar Plaza, walking along the north side of East Tremaine, and ending at Pine Street. I know, maybe next year, we can do like a ghost tour. We'll see what they come up, they always have great, great topics, the Historic Preservation Commission. For boards, commissions, and committees, we have a number of openings right now, and would love to have people involved in the Arts Commission, Cemetery Committee, the Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging Committee, and the Historic Preservation Commission. So you get on the commission, you could help guide next, you know, figure out what next year's tour is, you can go to pullman-wa.gov forward slash government for more information and to apply to be able to be part of one of the boards and commissions. The Pullman Aquatic and Fitness Center is currently experiencing issues with its air intake and exhaust system, and it's closed this time until further notice. While it's closed, some lessons have been canceled, some swim lessons have been moved to Rainy Park Pool. All active Pullman Aquatic and Fitness Center memberships, including swim, the summer memberships, can be used at Rainy Park Pool at no additional cost. If you have swim lessons this week, please check with Parks and Recreation account email for updates, or call the Pullman Recreation Center, five oh nine three three eight three two two seven, to be able to check on that. And thank you for your patience as, as we get the intake and exhaust system repaired. And then for summer reading, Neil Public Library's twenty twenty-five summer reading program is in full swing, it was great to see everybody signing up last Saturday. You can still drop in the library on Tuesdays, ten thirty AM or one PM for fun live events, including an insect experience with the V Bees on June twenty-fourth, the magic of Louis Fox on July first, and the misadventures of Captain Arg on July eighth. For full summer reading schedule events, go to pullman-wa.gov forward slash N P Y, I'm sorry, N P L, so Neil Public Library Youth. And for, to see a listing of other community events, visit the city's tourism page at visitpullman.com forward slash events. Next item is non-agenda related community comments, this agenda item is the first of two opportunities during this meeting for the public to bring comments to the attention of elected officials. Specifically, this item is reserved for public comments, concerns, or other information not related to a previous public hearing or final action on this agenda. Final action items include confirmation appointments, consent agenda, regular agenda items. We did, we do have two items that previously had a public hearing, so those public comments, community comments are not accepted on those. This agenda item for comments is not to exceed thirty minutes in total, comments will be directed to the mayor or the city council as a body, no comment should be directed to individual council members. And also, just as a refresher, R C W forty-two seventeen A dot five 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 doesn't allow for community comments to be used to support a political campaign. With that, if anybody would like to provide community comments, you can please come to the podium.
John Swenson, three twenty-five Southeast Derby, and as with last time, I'd request three minutes, since it doesn't seem like there's going to be a time constraint.
Let me, are there others that are providing comment? If not, three minutes would be fine, yes.
Thank you. Mayor and City Council, I'm back to continue my petition of the council to assist the citizenry in correcting the illegal and unconstitutional actions of the county assessor and depriving us of equality and taxation. I still ask for an invitation to present in long format to you and the citizenry, but this two to three minute installment will focus on the state laws that the assessor is violating, and case laws that define what her action should be to correct her mistakes. R C W eighty-four explicitly states that she must revalue each and every year, and that revaluation must be a hundred percent of market value, with adjustments based on physical inspection at least every six years. She is still utterly failing, and will not be compliant with the law for at least five more years, once all properties in the county have been revalued. She is even failing her new assessment plan, having missed entire streets in Pullman, like Emily Street and the Offstreet, doing the north side of Pullman this last year. During the questioning of Assessor Flodeen, Councilmember Gaither asked whether state law requires her to assess at a hundred percent annually. She answered yes, but gave an excuse about cost, manpower, and difficulty as being the reason she continues to fail to follow the law. I ask each council member, what you would do if a land developer in Pullman started building without permitting or other regulatory requirements because things cost too much, or are too difficult, or take too much manpower. Governments don't get to choose to not follow the law because it's too costly and too difficult. Perhaps the most important case law in all of this is the nineteen twenty-three United States Supreme Court case of Sioux City Bridge versus Dakota County. In this case, a similar situation occurred where some properties were being assessed at a higher ratio of their actual value than the remainder of the properties in the county. This is exact scenario of Pullman, where Pullman is now at eighty to ninety-five percent of assessed actual value, while the remainder of the county remains at forty to sixty percent. The action mandated by the Supreme Court in that case was that when the county cannot assure a similar ratio for all residents, that the assessment percentage of those being aggrieved should be lowered until such a time that equality and taxation, through equality and assessment ratios, can be achieved. The court's opinion concluded with the following statement, quote, "This court holds that the right of the taxpayer whose property alone is taxed at a hundred percent of its true value is to have his assessment reduced to the percentage of that value at which others are taxed, even though this is a departure from the requirement of statute. The conclusion is based on the principle that where it is impossible to secure both the standard of the true value and the uniformity and equality required by law, the latter requirement is to be preferred as the just and ultimate purpose of the law," end quote. Further, documents from the Washington State Attorney General, a memo in nineteen ninety-two about revaluation procedure says, "In each case, the constitutional requirement is that the seasonal attainment of rough equality and tax treatment of similarly situated property owners. This kind of rough equality in treatment is not achieved." Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, does anyone else would like to provide community comments? Seeing none, moving on to city council member comments, and with that, Councilmember Fagerin?
Just a couple of events I'd like to highlight for this weekend, in addition to the ones that have already been talked about. The board in Pullman, social media should be rather empty, given the activities happening this weekend, so. Number one, Pedal Pullman is happening on Friday, this is a free, family-friendly celebration of Pullman's trail system. It begins and ends near the Pine Street Plaza waterfall off of Kamaiakin in downtown Pullman, includes stops along the trail. It happens anytime between nine thirty AM and five PM. Additionally, on Saturday, there's Palouse Anime Fest, get ready for, I'm just reading the event details here, get ready for a full day of anime-themed excitement at Palouse Anime Fest. Join us for our unforgettable experience featuring local vendors, special guests, fan panels, and a thrilling cosplay contest to showcase your creativity and win prizes. Lastly, not covering them all, but there's also Pullman Pride, the Intersectional Advocacy Coalition and Community Allies invite you to Pullman Pride. This year's category is Ballroom, starts at nine AM, signed painting at Pups and Cups, Neil Library or Neil's Coffee, ten AM Rally at Cougar Plaza, and eleven thirty Sidewalk Parade to Rainy Park, and then festivities lasting until six PM in Rainy Park, so hope to see everybody out in the community this weekend.
Councilmember Parks?
No comments.
Councilmember Weller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, few things, totally unprepared. I gotta say, I gotta recognize Eric Fagerin and Councilmember Fagerin and Mayor Benjamin. Councilmember Fagerin seems to be the absolute, like, overall organizer of everything Spokane Falls community, he's shaking his head. But he invited us to the Spokane Falls Community College graduation, and Mayor Benjamin did a speech there, it was really a phenomenal event. It was very inspiring, the entire Lewis Alumni Center was packed. And it's not like any somber, you know, graduation ceremony, singing "We Will Rock You," it was absolutely a celebratory event. Very awesome to see, past Mayor Johnson was there as well, Glenn Johnson, and it was just phenomenal, so I wanted to thank Eric, Councilmember Fagerin for that, Mayor Benjamin for that, it was great to see. I think also, it should be noted, there is a, it's, and I may get this wrong, it's called Pool Mo Juneteenth Celebration on Thursday, and that's happening starting at eleven. And I know Councilmember Fagerin is going to be doing a welcoming from, you know, all of us on council, and so I thank Councilmember Fagerin for doing that. And so it's going to be a really cool event, they're trying to do these combined events for that, so I just felt it was important to recognize those things. Fellow council members rarely talk about themselves, I don't necessarily have that problem, so thank you both.
Councilmember Delira?
No comment.
Next item is City Council future agenda requests, does anyone have any future agenda requests? Seeing none, next item is community comments on final action items for this agenda, this agenda item is the second of two opportunities during this meeting for the public to bring comments to the attention of elected officials. On any agenda item, City Council will take final action item, excluding items where public comment was previously accepted, which is agenda item three and, regular agenda three and four. Final action items include confirmation appointments, consent agenda items, and regular agenda. The agenda item for comments is not to exceed thirty minutes in total, comments will be directed to the mayor, City Council as a body, no comment should be directed to an individual council member, so anyone who would like to provide a community comments on any final agenda items. Seeing none, we'll move right into presentations then, we have three coming up tonight, the first one from Pullman Regional Hospital, we have Matt Forge, who is the superintendent, CEO of the hospital, and with that, Matt, and it looks like your slides are up and ready to go.
All right, looks like I'm ready to go, thank you, Mr. Mayor, it's a pleasure to be in front of you tonight. Again, just to remind people, my name is Matt Forge, I'm the superintendent slash CEO of Pullman Regional Hospital, also known as the Public Hospital District of Pullman County. So I say that to say that I do serve the community of Pullman, it's my pleasure to serve, I'm here, so this presentation is for you, and hopefully you feel comfortable bringing up and asking any questions that you have at the end. But it's such a pleasure to be here in front of you and our wonderful community, and want to appreciate and thank you for all that you do here, I'd be remiss, we do have current and former, we have a community elected board, we have current and former elected board officials here, so I want to appreciate their, their commitment and support of me and our community's health care as well. So I should, I should be up here for about, you know, fifteen minutes, hopefully, if you know me, I can go a lot longer than that, so certainly have some questions, we'll have a good conversation. Want to talk just a little bit about the agenda, and I think what Pullman really cares about is access to quality care, right? And so whether that's calling to get in with your physician, with your doctor, whether that's emergency care, or whether that's just really anything that you need, you want to be able to call and get a yes. So I want to talk about how we're doing in that today, I want to start off by talking about that, that big project that our community approved and supported back in November of twenty twenty-two, it's amazing that time goes by that quickly, we've been hard at work, I want to give an update on that. Primary care is something that's really important to us right now, that we're working really hard on, I want to give you an update on that, I know that there's a little community buzz going on with that, so I want to talk about that, and then want to talk about what we're doing a little bit with recruitment, we've had some success even in the last few days, and have great plans moving forward to make sure that we're continuing to recruit great people to come and serve Pullman here. So with that, we'll just jump right into it, less wait, less travel, more access to exceptional health care, that is the way that we went to our community and really asked for support, you know, as a public hospital district, we do, we can go to our community and ask for support in big projects. We really appreciate the community's recognition that we have, and evolution that we're going under to, and make sure that we have, again, less wait, less travel, and more access to exceptional care. There's three promises, really, that we made as we went to the community, and that was, we want to expand our emergency services, right? We have an incredible set of physicians and nurses serving us, we have nine board-certified emergency room physicians, right here, our volumes represent that, they've gone to, to really pretty steady of over fourteen thousand the last few years. People are choosing to come to Pullman for their, their care, led by Dr. Pete Mickelson, it's an exceptional group, people are driving down from Spokane, that, that's the level of care they're providing. Unfortunately, if you come in on a game night or another night, you might find yourself in the hallway, nine or ten right there, because we've just kind of outgrown our current space. The changing needs of our community are also on the table, as we have more mental health scenarios that we're dealing with, I'll talk about that a little bit later, in terms of what, how we're working directly with the city on the full spectrum of mental health. But when we, when those commute or acute episodes are occurring, we want to make sure that we have safe space at the hospital to care for them and help them to get to the next space. So that, that project here is going to increase the footprint of our emergency department, and again, help our, our mental health. Expanded surgical services, we've been in the community talking a lot about expanding procedures, that really follows health care and really the growth of Pullman Regional as well. Now ninety percent of our, the care that we provide is in the outpatient setting, and so we're really filling up the four operating rooms and endosuites that we have. But what's happening right now at the hospital is, man, you're getting, having to get wheeled down, out of the, out of the operating space, down to the acute care rooms, that's what we call our med surge, where we take care of patients who have acute care needs, and we're really filling up that space quite a bit. So our expanded surgical services plan is going to add an additional operating room, it's also going to add additional space and more efficient space to care for those patients, which will in turn enhance our ability to care for more and more acute patients in the future as well. So we're expanding access, expanding services, and in a lot more efficient, efficient space. So one little story I like to tell on that, if you remember, if you get a total knee or total hip, it wasn't too long ago, that we kept you for three days in the hospital for those things. Now those things are, are coming in, you're getting them done in the morning, and then most of the time, you're heading home that evening. And all right, so how do we utilize the space in a little bit more efficient way that replicates, or, you know, reacts to what our community needs? So really excited about that work that's going there, and then, oh, I mentioned, I mentioned all the three there. So those, those are the three real areas that we're focused on, we want to continue to work to build access into our primary care, we'll talk about that in just a minute. So in the future, hopefully, we're talking more about medical office buildings and different plans in that area there. So what's our project progress and status? So again, this has been a couple-year process, the, the story here is that, man, I don't know if you've been around for the last couple of years, but there's been quite a few changes in the world that are happening in conjunction with our project. So that kind of looks back at our original plan to do a G C C M process, which is a general contract, contract management process, which is basically bringing in the construction group to work with your architect, to make sure that your plan is set. And so when you go out there, you're not walking into too many surprises, and so that's been the right choice for us. You know, the, the original kind of plans that we had were big and grand, and with our new plans that we're working on, we'll still be able to work on those into the future. But we needed to make sure that when we go to, go to work, there's no scenario where we go back to the community and ask for more, and so that's why that G C C M process has really worked out well for us. Now, we need to get that going, and so I'm proud to say that we're on track right now with the project that hits all those areas that I mentioned in the slide before. We have been working early with the Department of Health, and so we're on track, and we'll submit our final proposal on the fourteenth of July here, coming up in a couple of weeks. And that should put us on track to have Bowton mobilize in September, and then late September, early October, start getting after it. Now that original plan had a phase that was over five phases, and I'll show you some pictures of that in just a second, now that the new project is looking like more of three phases, and should be completed at the end of twenty twenty-seven or early twenty twenty-eight in, in just a couple of years. Now, the exciting part about what, what we're doing with that is we are going to be full service ahead throughout the project, so we'll, we'll see it in a couple of slides, but we'll first start in, in the laboratory, move that lab upstairs, continue services throughout. That does not mean there won't be some disruption, but it should be good. So all of our, it's been an inclusive process, we've included community members, all of our leaders, our board, different people, so it's been a really collective, awesome process that we're really, really excited to get going here in the next few weeks. All right, just to show you kind of some pictures, you know, real quick, I know there's a lot up there, but just kind of want to mention, you know, right now, if you get seen in our operating space in the, in the yellow area right there, you're going all the way down through outdoors, down hallways into the back area. If you see now, people will just go right out into that blue space to the left of the orange-yellow space there, that's going to be a heck of a lot more efficient as we see patients in our outpatient area. You might, you'll see down below in the, in the dark blue area, that's a expanded emergency room that goes into what is now our same-day south. There's three mental health-specific holding rooms in those plans, and the really exciting thing about the, the plans that we're showing here is on those nights where those, the students are having a lot of fun at the football games, we've got people traveling in here, and let's say we have a demand that outweighs our capacity for the night. You can see we can go right across the hall and use those lighter blue rooms up in that outpatient space as needed as well. So you're looking at a remodel in this area that enhances our ability to care for our community, safety and more efficiently in a, in a significant manner. So really excited about that progress, would be remiss if I didn't show you the new lab space, it's not industry, the industry norm for labs to have windows, but we figured we'd be the first one out there, if you don't know, that's a little lab joke for the hospital, right? They're going to have windows, they're going to be right above our current emergency department looking out, and so that's going to be some great space for our lab, that you can see in the white area to the right has room to expand in the future as well. So lots of, lots of fun going with the expansion project, we're about ready to get it going. Now, primary care is an area that we're really focused on right now, you know, the, the, since I, I got here two and a half years ago, we've, we've been talking a lot about doctors coming and leaving the community, right? So you, you talk with people, and they say, I've had two or three doctors, you know, in the last couple of years, I don't have a doctor. That is not a scenario that we really want for our community, right? And that's pushed a lot of the work that we've done over the past about five years. So what are some things that really help to secure and bring doctors and keep doctors in town? You know, one of them is electronic medical records, our community supported us significantly in, in adopting and implementing Epic, we're now two, a little over two years into that implementation, that's really supporting us. Two, and this is one, is that I know that there's questions, and it can be a little bit controversial, but it's kind of the consolidation of, of medical clinics. Now, Pullman has been an awesome place where our medical practices for a long time have been independent of one another, so you think about Palouse Medical, you think about, you know, ten years ago, Pullman Family and Palouse Pediatrics were independent. You still see our labor and delivery group, you know, Dr. Menudri's group up there is independent. Well, we're one of the final communities really, you know, in, you hate to say nation, but in the nation that has that independent, you know, nature, it's really awesome. So what happened over the course of the last, you know, ten years is those organizations, for the cost of electronic medical records, for the cost of running these businesses, declining reimbursements, they've kind of got to the point where they needed to be absorbed and supported, you know, to, to continue operations, to keep those doctors in town, right? So I can assure you that all those clinics approached Pullman Regional and the market to say, hey, we'd love to join, because we feel that we bring value to our community, we'd like to continue to provide services. Us as a public hospital district, our interest is only in the best interest of the community's health and welfare, of course, supported that. Now, what is great about that, and we'll talk a little bit more in the next slide as well, is now we have all of our primary care, almost all of our primary care, let's say, roofs and physicians, all at the same table. So we're really excited about the future of primary care in Pullman, because all the great minds, most of the great minds throughout the community are now sitting at the same table, designing and building primary care for the future, right? Now, I think in terms of talking about that progress and where we are at Pullman Regional in terms of our journey in primary care, you, you want to look, it starts with labor and delivery, so Palouse O B G Y N, this is a premier group. I don't know if we always recognize what we have in these groups, but Dr. Menudri, Dr. Trin, Dr. Campbell, Dr. Myers, these are incredible physicians. I'm from, originally from Lewiston, I hear stories about Dr. Menudri down there all the time, right? I mean, it's just, it's a heck of a group to have access to here, and it really is the, a foundational piece to that, to primary care. We are on track right now to deliver a hundred more babies than we have in what, what has been kind of a flat last few years, so that's where that service has really been stepping up and recognized by the market in our community here is great. Pediatric, sometimes I pinch myself knowing that we have access to a group like this in a place like Pullman in the Palouse. This is an incredible group, they have two clinics, one over in Moscow, one here, these are physicians that have been trained at some of the best medical schools and residencies in the country, and they came back here. So we, we take care right now of about six thousand, a little over six thousand kids, this is a heck of a, a group to have access to. And then you think about family medicine, and family medicine, we're still continuing to recruit, but that's where you think of Pullman Family, Palouse Medical, and now our residency clinic that we partner with, with WSU, which, by the way, we have matched with and are bringing in and having a celebration for them to, to join us, three more residents. and having a celebration for them to, to join us, three more residents. We'll take our total up to nine residents in Pullman. So a little bit of that benefit, a couple of those people are looking to, to stay in Pullman. That's the whole point of training them here so that hopefully service and access can continue to grow into the future. But not just that, over, over 10,000 additional visits took place in Pullman last year because at the residency center. So that will only grow with the additional residents. And we've been able to recruit Dr. Shonk to join that. Not only, you know, is that, that really helped us, but there was three physicians that were on their way out of town that were able to stay because of the residency clinic. So that's where you get up into those names, I want to be careful with that. But the three people and one that left for financial reasons that came back. So that residency clinic is really keeping people who came here in town. And then Palouse Medical, we're building a great relationship with that group. We're really excited that, that one of their members is staying in the community. And so we'll talk about that just in a second. Is adult medicine is kind of that final, that area. Adult medicine is what you call internal medicine in different places. It's really the group of physicians that have a little bit more education, a little different residency that take care of your most complex patients. Most of the time, that's your patient 65 and above. And let, let's be honest, in the Quad City region, this is a, hasn't been the best served population. I think right now we have five, really five to six internal medicines docs taking care of populations over 150,000 in our market. This is an area that we need to improve on. So when we do lose one of these physicians, our community feels it and they communicate about that. And I think that's completely appropriate. So what we want to do is we, as a, as an organization, as a community, we don't want to get ourselves back to this place, right? And so that, that, that's making us look at, how come we're doing so good all the way up until adult medicine? And that's where you start looking at strategies that we're working to employ in population health. So if you think about an internal medicine doctor coming into town, I'm going to try to do this quickly here. I know I'm getting to the end of my time. But you bring a, a person in town and say, hey, come to Pullman. We're going to take, we're going to allow you to take care of our thousand sickest patients, right? All by yourself. Or, all, all, all in there by yourself, or we're going to provide case management to take care of and follow up with your sickest patients to make sure that they're getting the, they're getting to their appointments so that they're getting their medications and they're taking them correctly, that they're answering questions that might keep them from taking their medications in the next week. We have at Pullman a great lineup of nutritionists and one that actually is a diabetic educator, right? Think about supporting that. Chronic disease management, some of that data support, palliative care, nutrition, pharmacy, all of those areas. Now imagine if you're a primary or an internal medicine doc and we say, come take care of our 1,000 patients with this incredible team of support that we have built to integrate right into your practice, right? So integrated behavioral health is a big investment that we've made. And so what we're saying is, if you're a patient, would you benefit from having access and easy coordination to all of these services that we do have here in Pullman? We just need to reorganize. Or, and as a physician, would you rather come to have that support as well? So what we are doing to summarize that is we're really building an infrastructure that will allow us to take better care of our patients who need it the most while also allowing us that support system to recruit people to this program. All right, how are we doing? Right now, we have three internal medicine candidates on the docket. We have a historical one, one that's been in town that is looking to potentially come back and help support us. We have two others that we're interviewing and working through. We also have a great pipeline. So right now, we have a partnership with the Everett Internal Medicine Clinic. So 11 months out of the year, we have a third year internal medicine resident coming to Pullman Regional to, to train and practice here. And so that's a great opportunity for us to build relationships and potentially recruit to that area. I mentioned family medicine, so jumping out of internal medicine now. We had a site visit in June. We have another one scheduled for the next couple of weeks to continue to recruit family medicine here. We just signed an acute care surgeon. So we lost, we had a retiree acute care surgeon, Dr. Martin, who just left us. And we just recruited another one in that just signed in the past few days. So we're really excited to bring them to town. We also have two additional site visits scheduled because as, as you have a great primary care that is bringing more people in, that means when you call to get in, we can say yes. There's, they're going to need at times downstream services that we want to make sure that we can care for and support as, as well. Urology is another area. This is a tough recruit. Dr. Kaiser does an incredible job here supporting our community. We need to make sure that we have that moving forward. Non-physician clinicians. So we're working on extender programs with our primary care physician, which means that if you call to get in with one of our physicians, a lot of times they'll have some additional support from APC, a nurse practitioner or a physician assistant to continue to, to support that access in a team fashion. We have three of those visits scheduled. We're also recruiting, we have two site visits coming through for orthopedics and inland orthopedics, and then ENT. We're working on doing that as well with Palouse specialty physicians. So a heck of a lot going on at the hospital. So hope that summarizes right now all the things that we're working on. Now, there's a lot more that we could get into, if you'd like, about making sure that we have access to incredible care here in Pullman.
Great. With that, questions and councilor Parks?
Thank you. It's really exciting to see all the growth and the way that the plan pivots with the needs of the community. I have a couple of, well, and I'll, I'll say I'm a patient in the residency program and I just love seeing the young people, whether they're taking vitals or sitting in with a physician. It's, it's really a good program and it's, it's bringing a lot of good care, but also younger people, like you said, who may decide they want to stay here. So that's good. I had a question about the growth, more kind of a behind the scenes question. With all of the growth of the facilities and the physicians and the medical teams, what does, what, how does the sort of the engine room look with the referrals and billing and medical records folks? I know you all just moved into the Columbia Bank Building is what we all are calling it.
Yeah, the PAC.
But I'm just curious as, because it seems like that would have to grow commiserately with more, you know.
It is, and that, that's some of the, I think, I'm really glad that you brought that up because that's some of the most critical, those are some of the most critical workflows as it relates to our community's experience with the hospital as well. And so when you make a move as big as Meditech, so we had our electronic medical record prior to Epic was Meditech. And we were on Meditech for 25 years plus, right? And so our, our knowledge of Meditech and those processes was really deep. And the thing that you bring on with Epic is a different system that, that incentivizes and focuses on different things. And so no matter what community that you're in, that is a learning curve. There's a learning curve associated with that. And so then it really comes down to how quickly, you know, can you get over that learning curve? And so the, the, one of the big incentives that Epic promotes is that all those different teams, what you do upstream impacts that your compatriot downstream, right? So your teammate downstream. That is a lot more, that's more enhanced in Epic than in, in, in Meditech, right? So we used to have these teams kind of spread out all around campus in different places, at Corporate Point. And so one of the critical areas is really getting that team all together. So all the leaders of those teams sit right next to each other and those teams are immersed throughout the PAC or the bank, right? And so, man, I, I can tell you, we've starting to see, we're starting to see our AR go down. We were up in, you know, low 70s at one point. We're down at the 53. And AR is counts receivable, just really means that you're, you know, getting those processes clean and, you know, getting that money back from the insurance companies. And so we're seeing that improvement go. Now, to enhance that, we're working on a customer service program, organization wide, so we can really get to the, get to the behind the scenes and bring out those things where we can continually improve. So we're working on it in a lot of different angles. But I'm starting to see a ton more progress and, you know, collective effort from that team that I think is going to help us continue improving that area. We're not all the way out, but it's improved a heck of a lot and we're on the right track.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Weller?
Thank you, Ms. Mary. Matt, great presentation. Super excited for it, definitely future. So I have a few questions here. So you had touched on the mental health, and I know you didn't, you couldn't get into a lot of detail regarding it. But one thing I would like to know is, do you have, does your staff go through mental health first aid training or QPR, question persuaded refer, suicide prevention training? So that's question number one. So you can mull it over as this next question. So as I, you know, as, as we all start to, I'll speak for me. As I start to age, I think about, you know, what's next? And how can I become the best version as I age? And so it's taken me kind of into a deep dive of preventive health.
Yep.
And in that is a component of mental health. My question is, especially as you start gathering as, as more independent doctors and are coming in, how, I'm not sure exactly how to ask, but I'll ask the best I can. How do you balance the preventive care with the primary care? It's almost like, to me, it almost seems, it almost seems like a lot of the emergency and primary care, when you're out at sea, you're plugging the holes as they come along. Whereas when you're going with preventive, it's like you're checking everything, you're making sure as you go out, you know, things are up to snuff and you're saying you need to take care of this along the way. But I know it can be kind of a touchy subject, especially as we age, we become more stubborn, or at least I do. But I know our citizenry, we're having more retired individuals come in, people are living longer, and, you know, how do you live longer, healthier? And so my question really comes down to what is the balance between preventive care? Because there's limited resources and then kind of that emergency primary care.
And I really appreciate that question. And I'm going to try to answer all three of it in kind of a sequenced, you know, plan. And I, I do have a great slide for this and it, it got left out of this great program. But so I want to start by talking about kind of the problem. So we, we know that 70% of, of mental health scenarios, situations present first at the primary care setting, right? So what we can say is a majority of the scenarios that you're referring to come into our, our facilities. And so then what you're talking about is really healthcare, in a sense, that balance between preventative and primary care is really, you know, what I like to call a bottleneck, right? That means if you have an issue, you need to call, you need to get in, the right question needs to be talked about, it needs to become the priority of the scenario. Then the resources and the referral links need to be there and they need to be accessible and they need to be open and they need. So what my point is, we need a lot of things to go right in the current system for you to get the support and the care that you need. And so that's 70% of people that are going, you know, going through there that, man, there's a lot that might be falling through the cracks. And so where we're seeing that at the hospital is in our emergency room, right? Where we have, you know, let's see, 270 patients that are making up, that have over five visits per year, making up, you know, almost 2,000 visits, right? And so those are people who are saying, I, I need some of this help. And so what are we doing to align that? Well, the, the questionnaire that is standard is what they call PHQ2 and a PHQ, a subsequent PHQ9. And really what that is, is it's just a, a quick questionnaire to get the sense of where your mental health scenario is at. Now, so two things with that. We have a lot of places that you can access care at the hospital. Are we asking that question at every scenario? Now, we have the electronic medical record prepared and ready. So if you come in the emergency room or primary care, even an imaging visit or at some, one of our clinics, are we asking you that question, right? And then that, that process to identify that, then when I talk about population health up here, imagine the goal that we have a plan for you or a plan really for any community member prior to you accessing our organization. So that when we get that positive test or there's some other indicator through a visit at some location, we have that quick handoff, that quick support, access to those services already planned and ready to go so that we can get you right in that support system. So that ultimately, hopefully, within our community, at least through our primary care setup, we can reduce the amount of truly acute episodes we're seeing in our ER and downstream and flooding those systems downstream. So again, I hope, I hope that all kind of connects and makes sense, but it's about building a whole platform and system to be prepared because we know that you're coming, right? And that once we're there, we want to support our physicians to get you to the right place. And then we want to do everything that we can to stay with you until we know we can get you to the, the right space.
That's good. Councilmember Fajery?
Thank you, Matt, for the presentation. And I'm also a patient at the residency center. And so I'm just so excited to see all the work that's being done there along with the expansions of the hospital. Just one question about, on care specifically around supporting the LGBT community. As folks know, you know, the LGBT community face many challenges, finding inclusive primary care. I know that's not the story here at Pullman Regional Hospital. So I just want to give you the opportunity to talk about how the hospital is really setting the bar for how they're supporting the LGBT compute, LGBTQ community and making sure that they receive the supportive and passionate care that they deserve.
I, I just want to say that, you know, first and foremost, we have a lot of advocates for, for that within the hospital that we are continuing to work on giving a voice and giving access to. So the, the most important thing is that we're there, we're listening, we're adjusting where we need to. Because it's really important that regardless of where you come from, what scenario you're going through, that we have support within the, the organization in multiple different ways to help support what, what our community members need. You know, we, we have some very passionate physicians that are helping to guide the way for Pullman Regional in DEI and other scenarios to, again, to make sure that we're open, inclusive, staying on the front edge of that because it, it does make up, you know, those scenarios make up a big portion of our population and they need to be supported in, in Pullman as well. So it's a priority for us and we want to make sure that we're doing everything we can to, to care for, for anyone who accesses our, our facility. Thank you.
Councilmember Delara?
Thank you so much for your presentation. It's great to know that the Pullman Regional Hospital has been working really hard on access and expansion. And I'm glad that WCA Medical School has been an asset for the region. One of the things I'd like to know more in terms of the work Pullman Regional Hospital is doing is around affordability. So cost of healthcare can be daunting with those with health insurance that fall short. For example, students commonly find themselves in that situation. So I want to know what does Pullman Regional Hospital do to support those with potential financial hardships to afford paying their medical bills?
Well, we, we get the, you know, the awesome, you know, responsibility of caring for people regardless of their propensity, ability to pay, right? And so you can access a Pullman Regional in any location and we'll care for you and we'll take care of you. So that, first and foremost, want to make sure everyone knows that if you have a need, please, please come, you know, please, please help us. And then in terms of the actual affordability, you know, our, our plan, and you, you heard me talk about it in, in the primary care section in population health, is we want to have a plan for all of our people. We want to make sure that when you call, we say yes to get you into the, the more affordable areas of care, right? So if you're not feeling good, you call your primary care doc or a, a cheaper area of care and we say no, you're going to that emergency room. So that's where access is really critical for us. We need to make sure that when our community calls us, we can get you in in the next day or two. And we've been working on setting frameworks the last couple of years to make that a reality. Again, I, I mentioned the physician leadership, the table that we're, that we're working together, building that. So we, we have capacity that we can realize to do that. And then, all right, if you have to come to the emergency room or you need those other things, we have financial counselors. We have a, in the state of Washington, we have a great, you know, care support, you know, financial support system. And so I just want to encourage everyone to reach out to those, those resources if you need them. And again, come, come to Pullman if, if you need us. Thank you.
So I'd be remiss if I didn't give former commissioner.
God, the brim here.
If you have any questions or statements, this is your opportunity.
Give me.
For that. So Matt, thank you again. I, I so appreciate the partnership that we've been working together in, in looking at these key critical things as it relates to our medical care within the community. at these key critical things as it relates to our medical care within the community. And it's been exciting watching the hospital move from a reactive care to a, a proactive care, and just the dynamics and changes that's happening, and what it's going to mean long run for our community. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
Appreciate you. Our next presentation, we have Porta Whitman and Kara Rebold, Executive Director. And with that, Kara?
Thank you. Thank you for having me. Matt's a hard act to follow, but it's good to know that as I'm getting older every year, and I keep planning to, they're going to be ready for me. So Kara Rebold, Porta Whitman County, and just want to talk a little bit, good to see a lot of familiar faces from the last time I was here. We've been working really hard on becoming your port on the Palouse. And going along with that, we haven't changed our mission in any way, but the commissioners have really set a focus at executing this mission countywide, because we are a countywide port district. So this is our mission up here on the screen, and I'm going to go through and kind of talk about how we've expanded that focus to the entire county. Our three commissioners, they each serve six-year terms, their districts overlap with the county commissioners. In the last six months, we've had three new hires, and so our staff is starting to trend a lot younger and a lot taller, as you can see from the photo. And this is also, I think, really helping us to, on our countywide mission. We do try to measure how we're doing at our goals. Every two to three years, we have a regional economist, Steve Peterson, from the University of Idaho, do an analysis of our economic impacts, and we're really looking at job creation, and job creation that's above the median wage. So it's important to us that not only are we giving an economic benefit back to the county, that jobs are being created through the businesses that we are trying to facilitate. We have a budget this year of about $20 million, which is pretty high for us, but you can see from that income side that most of that is, the majority of it is coming from other than taxes, and it's really grants and loans. Our staff works really hard to bring in dollars from outside of our community to support the work we're doing in Whitman County. So a lot of state and federal grants and loans have supported the capital projects, which is what you see on the expense side, the majority of where that budget goes. So about 80% of our budget's going towards capital projects, which allows us to create those economic impacts that you saw on the previous slide. We have expanded and acquired three properties in the last two years that have brought us to 10 properties, and you can see that we really are expanding countywide from all the way, the northernmost property in Tico, to four properties right along the Snake River. One of those is the Port of Wilma, so we have three on-water port sites, although they're not named Port of Whitman, they are managed and owned by the Port of Whitman. Wilma's 300 acres, it's fully developed and leased out. The port owns infrastructure in there, including rail and barging facilities that you can see in here. The Port of Central Ferry, this is our, the port that's the farthest away from any community, it's about 35 miles from the nearest town. We have rail facilities that you can see going through there, as well as barging facilities. And then the Port of Almota is home to two grain companies that ship grain out of there, and it's just below Boyer Park and Marina. So this facility is leased from the Army Corps of Engineers, and then we lease it out to a concessionaire who does the management of the park, but the port does all of the capital improvements. So our most recent one was the $6 million dock improvement at the Marina in 2023, it was completed. And if you weren't there last weekend, we hosted the annual Snake River Family Festival, which is an opportunity for us to celebrate the benefits of the Columbia rate Snake River system, and we have exhibitors there that talk about how this river system is used to benefit our economy. We own the Port of Whitman Business Air Center, so this is mostly an ag-focused airport just outside of Colfax, and then it has some industrial lands beyond it. All of our hangars there are completely leased out, and we recently received a car loan from WashDOT to build 18 more hangar sites and a new hangar there, and we are working on exploring a fuel system for this property. We have, in the industrial side, we have a hydrogen-based company, as well as a value-added ag grain company. So becoming your port on the Palouse means taking on new and very exciting projects, and this is definitely one of those. This is the Oakstale Mill, you might have seen it. As you go through Oakstale, the community fundraised with the Anovia Foundation to purchase the mill site, and then gifted it to the port. So we are currently working on a feasibility study to understand how we could use this for economic development, what those costs might be, and developing a plan for that. It's going to be a, a long-term project, but the community and the commissioners are very excited about it, and so of course, staff is too. The Tico Industrial Park, this is one of our newly acquired properties, and we received funding, after doing a feasibility study, we received funding to fully develop this site out. So it's about 15 acres, we will be putting in three-phase power, telecommunications, as well as working with the town of Tico to bring it under the city's water rights, so we can have all of the, the infrastructure in place to recruit up to five businesses there. There'll be five pad-ready sites. And you're familiar with the Pullman Industrial Park, I'm sure. This is an infrastructure project that started in the 70s, a lot of work done by the port early on to put in the infrastructure. We, now, of course, the roads are owned by the city, and most of the land has been sold to the private businesses that are there. We still have a few more lots, and three of those lots are slated for the tech transfer facility. So this is a project that we've worked a long time on bringing closer to fruition, and with our recent grant from Commerce, we are about approaching the halfway mark on our funding for this. This facility will bring tech transfer out of the university, it will facilitate researchers who have proven out technologies in their labs and need a full-scale site to work on Commerce was a big supporter, we recently received a $2 million grant from them, and we're excited to have the director's support in this program, and, and also the support of the City of Pullman and other organizations in Pullman. We see a lot of benefits in this facility for the community and for the region, new job creation, which will impact all of the ancillary businesses around the generation, of course, of state and local tax revenue, and then again, that focus on creating jobs that higher, higher than a county average wage. So when I say thank you for the support, we really mean it. 155 letters from over 25 entities, that means we've come back to you, and back to you, and back to you, and asked for another letter of support for the next unique funding opportunity that we found, and it's starting to pay off. We also appreciate the participation that we've had. We've had an annual Infrastructure for Innovation meeting, it will be coming up again in September, and it's nice to have members of the council and the community there to learn about what we're doing, as well as our other advocacy efforts. One of the other projects that we've taken on that's really brought us into more of a community-wide role is the Community-Wide Brownfields Assessment Grant. The implementation of that funding that we received from the EPA has resulted in nominations of five different brownfield sites in Whitman County that were nominated either by a local government, or in some cases, the actual landowner, and they have led to us being able to develop partnerships for reuse and revitalization of those sites. So there, obviously, as we went on our roadshow to talk about nominating sites for this, I heard a few times, there's no brownfields in our town. And as we went and kind of peeled the onion back and talked about a little bit more, some of the fears of saying there's a brownfield went away, and people started to get more creative and think, well, what would I like to see redeveloped? It doesn't mean that there's actually contamination at the site, it means it's not being redeveloped, maybe because someone believes there's contamination. So there's two success stories already in Whitman County, which is great, it makes our job easier as we start our program, one's in Rosalia, one's in Palouse. And we're working on a third one, and that's in St. John. So the Whitman Hospital and Medical Clinics nominated this site, it was one that they'd looked at for building a new clinic in St. John, but there were concerns with the property needing some remediation, so they asked the port, would you take this on and go through the environmental site assessments? They're all funded by our grant. And it led to a place where we felt confident purchasing that entire property, and we recently received a half million dollars to do the cleanup effort, which will allow us to then sell or lease the property back to the hospital for their uses. And we're glad to have their support. So as we continue through this, we are planning to apply for another assessment grant, which would give us another round of funding to continue this type of work. And we encourage you, and anyone watching at home, if you have an interest to visit our website, and if you can think of a property that you're like, well, would this maybe be one, there's a nomination form, or you can just call and talk to us, and, and we can talk about what the opportunities are with properties that might come to mind, because we'd like to continue to do this work within the county. Broadband, obviously, has been something that we've been proud of doing countywide. Our newest project that was funded will bring fiber to the home along portions of Sunshine Road, and then also on the north part of Pullman. I don't want to say the road, because I might get it wrong, but we can get a map for the council members, but it's just north of our industrial park, it's an area that we've heard from, frequently from the residents there, that there's a need, and we finally have the funding to do something there. Countywide, we hear about the challenges with childcare. We did get a funding to do a feasibility study that built on some work that was already being done in Colfax. That study is wrapping up right now, and we have an infrastructure cost, we have a site located that we can purchase to build a childcare facility. Right now, we still don't have the most challenging piece to fit into the puzzle, which is who will run this facility? And that's, you know, I see you nodding your heads, this, the $5 to $7 million is not as scary as when we build it. The kids will come, but who will be there to corral them? So we are still talking with partners in the community to see if we can find another way to solve that challenge, but it, it's something that we hear over and over in all of the towns within Whitman County, and it's, there's not an easy solution. We are continuing on, the county has granted us, I guess, the ability to be the ADO again for the next biennium, so we'll continue our work in those core competencies of the ADO. And then, we're also are going to continue to do the economic development meetings that are part of that. In addition to, you know, that core focus, we want to continue to build the economic development community regionally. And so we've, we started doing these meetings in 2023. Participation from elected officials and other economic development partners has been critical to that success. You can see in those pictures, we've even had some of the legislative staff attend, which has been really nice. It's an opportunity to share some of the challenges that are going on, it's an opportunity to also share some of the wins, because sometimes we do need to be able to pat ourselves on our own backs once in a while, and say, you know, this went really well in our community, and share that success story for others to learn from. And so this, these meetings give a chance for that. And if, if you're feeling like you haven't seen these invitations before, just, just let me know, or let the mayor know, and we'll make sure that you get on that list. Also, the outreach, coming and presenting to you all, this is my last of 14 town council presentations. Save the best for last, I guess I could say. It's been a great time to go around and learn, and I want to continue this engagement through all the year, as we have things to share. And then the presentations could be shorter, right? Future collaboration that we'd like to do with all of the towns, but City of Pullman, obviously, as well, prioritization of regional projects, working together on what are the projects that the entire region can coalesce around, and how can we use that support in our legislated advocacy? So we're going to talk more about that as, in the next few months, and we prepare for the 2026 session, but I think there's a real opportunity for us to work together as an entire county, and kind of find some of those projects that we can all push together over the finish line, and also to support each other's individual projects, too. And I think there are a lot of different ways to do that. These are just a few more of those sites. I, if you have any questions for me, I-
With that, Councilmember Waller?
So Kara, you've been on the job since, what, '22?
2022, yeah, I think that sounds right.
Yeah, because before you were CO, right?
Yes, I did a lot of broadband work.
Yeah.
A lot of broadband work.
I just have to recognize how absolutely impressive your work has been, having been on a, a few of the tours. I do not recall being on any tours previous to that, personally, and your, the example you set of collaboration regionally is so, I mean, inspiring, and it's obviously paying off a lot. And in my opinion, seeing the way you work and the communication you do and everything like that, I personally feel it has to do with the leadership, your leadership, so I just wanted to say thank you so much, and thank you for presenting in front of us and other city councils, so thank you.
Well, thank you. I appreciate you coming on those tours. It's really hard to collaborate alone, and it's hard to, you know, host a tour that no one shows up to. So all of the collaboration that we've had from the city team, Sean Miller, we've worked with him and meet with him at least once a month on Economic Development Focus, and other members of the city staff also make our job in collaborating a lot more fun and a lot easier, so thank you.
Not seeing any others. Thank you again, as, as, as Councilmember Waller said, the collaboration is, is critical and important, and we value the work that the port does and the impact that it has, and I'll just put the plug in that, you know, with our new airport development, there's opportunity there for, I think, some, some port opportunities.
Great. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Kara. So our, our last two presentations, we, we started with partners, we went to regional, and now we're going to look back and focus on ourselves, and so Sean Wells with his annual report for Public Works.
Well, thank you, everyone. Yeah, so the 2024 Annual Public Works Report, wanted to highlight the accomplishments that the department had last year, and there were a lot, so I'll try to make this really long, because there's a lot to talk, no, kidding. We've got the four divisions of Public Works shown on this first slide here, the administrative support, which is our administrative teams, the engineering group, which does a great job at designing, running, and constructing the projects, running the major projects that you see out in the field. Maintenance and Operations Division is just handling all of the things related to water operations, water distribution, sewer collection, storm collection, and sewer treatment as well. It also includes our fleet and equipment rental sections. And then the Transit Division, Pullman Transit, is its own little wing of Public Works. The department staff is shown here, there are 110 staff total. Engineering's got 13 staff, Maintenance and Operations 48, Transit 45, and with the administration and me, that rounds it out to 110 staff. It's a combination of full-time staff and part-time staff, but that's 110 people that we employ in Public Works. The Engineering and Stormwater Section, the services that they've done in 2024 were 11 capital improvement projects for $13,000, or I'm sorry, $13 million in construction valuation. Now, a major portion of that was Project Downtown, and this was just the 2024 valuation for that. There were still some funds that were spent in 2025 as well. Water Tank 12 was completed, the Terror View and Crest View Pass, and these are just some of the highlighted projects that were completed in '24. Hall Drive Resurfacing, or Military Hill, the city cemetery expansion, which was kind of a collaboration with the Parks Department on that, the Canyon View Trail as well. And then there were a bunch of other projects that filled in the remaining 13 million there, the sidewalks projects, the treatment plant, WAS thickening, some crack fill, asphalt repair on South Grand, where we had a water main break in front of the batting cages. The Development Services portion, engineering reviews, site plans that come in for seven major projects. They will do the inspections for city assets that will ultimately be turned over, so like as an example, a, a short platter, a plat may install water and sewer lines, we would go in there and inspect that component of it for public, turn back to the public at the end. One of the biggest projects that we had in 2024 was the completion of the Pullman Moscow Regional Airport Terminal Site. Ran sewer out there, we helped them with their stormwater improvements and the site construction and inspection primarily overall. There were a lot of other private development projects that were completed in 2024 as well, with the Annex Apartments, Aspen Heights, the Hidden View residential development, and the Les Schwab addition down on Bishop and Grand. We issued 124 right-of-way disturbance- We issued 124 right-of-way disturbance permits and seven major grading permits as well. Design services, this is meant to go by fast and look confusing, because these were the projects that are still under work in 2024 as it ended. And so there were a lot there that are still going on, some that you'll see the fruition of, like the Orchard Drive and Valley Road resurfacing that started this week. And some of the other stuff that is also started, the Terra View Drive Eight Inch Water Main project, you've been made aware of the FEMA remapping project, we've been involved in that. Our city engineer Kara Haley last week brought forward the water system plan update, which was a major contribution to that. There's a lot going on in the engineering world that is behind the scenes that they get ready for 2025 or even beyond that. Summing up the engineering time areas with the complete streets accomplishments, we did a lot of ADA improvements. The teams reconstructed 26 ramps and 39 ramps were new constructed. Now, a lot of these are going to be due to the Project Downtown and the Main Street construction that was there as well. Thirteen driveway entrances were reconstructed to meet ADA accommodations, as well as the seven parking stalls that were created for Main Street. We reconstructed 3,000 feet of sidewalk. We built 3,600 feet of infill. 3,100 feet of bikes and ped baths, ped paths were built, and over 2,100 linear feet of bike trails were built last year. Four rectangular rapid flashing beacons were installed around the city, three new pedestrian crossing refuge areas, the speed table at Main and Pine, 13 curb boltouts, the majority of those were on Project Downtown, where you reduce the distance for the pedestrian to walk across the streets by adding curb boltouts. Two road diets. What's a road diet? That's where you take lanes out and in, add back in either pedestrian or parking amenities. The two road diets would be the Olson Street re-striping in front of the library, as well as Kamaiakon Street, where we removed travel lanes in order to add parking. And then we also added two new bus shelter pads as part of that project and the overall work. Stormwater services, 79 private BMPs were inspected over six different sites. A BMP is a best management practice, so that could be something like a bioswale, a storm vault. Responded to 10 water main breaks, which was coincidentally the same number of water main breaks we had the previous year. Ninety percent of those are cast iron in the six inch to eight inch sizing. We installed 862 what called meter transceiver units, or what we call MXUs. 392 of those were new, 470 were replacements. That's important, because the replacement for failures, these are the units that are in your water meter that when the water meter reader truck drives by, it sends a signal to the meter, says, what's the reading? And it sends a signal back, says, you just used 18 gallons, or whatever the numbers are. When those fail, staff has to go and manually read that meter, crawl down, wipe it off, get the numbers out there. And that was happening more and more as we were anticipating a transition to the AMI metering system, which would then be direct read. But since we didn't, staff was kind of hesitant on replacing those failures, thinking we were going to spend a lot of money to replace them, and then change them out when we did AMI. And so we kind of made a conscious decision that AMI is still going to happen, but we have to reduce the labor costs of manually reading all those. So they would spend a little bit of time, kind of that slow down to speed up mindset. We have to go replace some of these. So this was actually a big one. It saved a lot of labor hours, a lot of grief from the staff that had to get out of the truck, go and read the manual read, and, and get into places. And they never fail in easy-to-read spots. There are always that meter that's behind something, so, or buried. So that was a big one. Water conservation efforts, we had nine low-flow toilet rebates and 11 irrigated lawn removal rebates. This was actually low for us in 2024. We've had many years where those are very high, primarily the low-flow toilets due to construction, our new construction. We've seen that very high in years past, but this happened to be a low one for us. Just noting that, that maybe we need to do some more water conservation education in the future coming years. Water pumped and water sold was both down, which is a good thing in the water conservation world. Bad if you're trying to sell water, but good in the conservation world. And that shows that our, I think, our conservation efforts are helping out. Our landscape irrigation scheduling that we had in place is, is starting to pay off in that. We also were able to account for slightly more water, which means that we're reducing our unknown leaks and unknown water theft. And so that's kind of a neat statistic to see that we're almost up, you know, over 94%, which is quite good for a city of our size. Our equipment rental and fleet worked through 2,412 work orders with almost 6,000 hours of time. We put 15 new vehicles into service, a lot of police cars, crew pickups and staff vehicles, and coincidentally, we pulled 15 vehicles out and sent those to auction and surplus. Sometimes those don't balance out, but. The wastewater treatment plant had a 2% increase in treated flow from 2023. 467 dry tons of biosolids were produced. We were able to land apply some of those at the beginning of '24. Most of that was hauled to composters, and almost all of that will be continually hauled to composters in 2025. And then this interesting statistic that the treatment plant operator supervisor Trevor Cook pointed out to me is that they did almost 18,000 in-house tests of the biosolid materials. I had to call him up today. I says, is that accurate? 18,000? He said, yeah. He says, when they pull a sample to test, like BOD or dissolved oxygen, they'll pull a sample, and they have to test it like three or four times for each sample. And so each one of those is considered a test, and they'll do that four times a day. And so those tests started adding up, and I said, well, were any of those, like, done outside? And these are brand new? No, this is average. This is what they do annually in the lab. So the lab's very active with the testing that they have to do for our regulatory requirements. Shocked me. Pullman Transit, moving to the transit section, this is going to get a little interesting with numbers. I, Transit Manager Wayne Thompson is very good with giving numbers out, and I continued that here. He will actually come and do a transit presentation later in the next couple of months, but this one was kind of a preview. One of the neat things with transit, we went back to midnight full service on weekdays and Saturdays in 2024, and we got approval and began expansion service to the Pullman Moscow Regional Airport, which was interesting there, too. We, we had 884 riders on the airport routes in 2024. We also got grant awards and approval to purchase three battery-electric buses from BYD, and this is a preview, one of the three designs that will be on one of the three buses. And I believe we got our third bus today, if all went well. But this was a mock-up of one of the designs. This is probably 98% complete with what one of them will look like. The others are themed. One's a theme with the library, and the other one is kind of a theme of just things in Pullman in general. So it's going to be really neat. They're very colorful, kind of keeps with the current branding colors that the city's been going with as well. Operational statistics, vehicle revenue hours shown here divided for fixed route, dial ride, and then a total between the two. So vehicle revenue hours, it's the number of hours that they're in service with active riders. And then vehicle revenue miles overall drove 439,000 miles over all of our fleet in 2024. Ridership, I put a little note there that ridership has gone down since 2023. 2022 was the highest year after COVID, so we hit COVID decline. It bounced in 2022, and it's had a slow decline since then, unfortunately. So ridership is slightly down 7.2% from 2023 to 2024. Operating costs have gone up just a little slightly there, and the fare box revenues, which is, includes all of the passes, money into the fare box itself, pass and token sales, has gone down slightly since 2023. The efficiency metrics that we use to kind of calculate where we're at with things, we do take a look at operating costs per vehicle revenue hour and per vehicle revenue mile. So that's what it takes or what it costs us for every hour or for every mile that it's in service. The third line there is the operating cost per ridership. On the regular fixed route services, it takes $6.70 for every rider that we walks on the bus, and we charge less than a dollar, a dollar or less, depending on if you buy an annual sale for each rider that comes on. The fare box recovery ratio, therefore, is, is shown there as well. Ridership per vehicle recovery or revenue hour and vehicle revenue mile is shown, and the average fleet age is the other thing that I wanted to point out there. We try to keep our fixed route buses right around the 12-year mark is what the industry standard is, and then the dial ride vans, we're trying to keep at five years. But we do have an aging fleet, and so getting these new battery electric buses will help. We just got grant award for two new electric, battery electric buses, and hopefully we can put those into service here in the upcoming years. The vehicle recovery, or I keep saying recovery, vehicle revenue miles driven per employee. So that's annually. Every employee is driving about 14,000, or if you're a dial ride driver, about 10,000 miles on average every year. For the fixed route, that's about 55 miles per day per employee. They're on the road a lot, and, you know, kudos to them for not having significant accidents to report. So with that, kind of concludes the Public Works Report. There's a lot more data that I could have totally gotten in the weeds on, but those were the highlights. There will be a published report that comes out here later this week, probably early next week, that'll have all of the data if you want to really get into the weeds on this. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that I can.
So questions, so Councilmember Waller?
Yeah, Sean, I never have questions for you. I, you know, I think I may get tired of saying kudos to you for the things you do, because the amount of stuff that you're managing, I, I couldn't even, I couldn't imagine doing what you do. But that's why I'm here, and you're doing awesome out there. I will say, I received a lot of feedback during the downtown project that you were calm, cool, collected under pressure, and that's huge. I think anybody who's sat in this position, any other department head or anything like that, understands that, you know, leadership during the most difficult times shows real character. So I appreciate that, you know, you're on staff. Hope you never leave, so tell Bellevue, uh-uh. And I will say also, I don't know how you get free time to also do umping and everything, but, you know, you're a true asset for us, for this community, and I really think a lot of that stuff should be on a highlight reel. So, you know, thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Councilmember Parks?
Thank you. Yeah, I echo everything that Nathan said. It's a pleasure to work with you and your department. You're always accessible to us, and I, we appreciate that very much. I, I think this is so important, and I hope there are a lot of people who will see this, because I think that our residents don't, we don't think about Public Works, right? We don't think about curbs, sidewalks, gutters, streetlights until something's wrong. But when you travel to other cities and streets don't have street signs on them, not lit street signs, there are just no street signs, you know, small things like that. And I just, this is such a good reminder to our, to our residents that the Public Works Department is the engine room of the city, and with, when things are, when you're doing your job, everything's going well, nobody pays attention, but we only get attention when they're not. So going back to the downtown project, I think that's a stellar example of, look what we have now, and that's wonderful. And then just finally, transit, I can't say enough about Dial Ride. I have several friends who use it, and I actually thought about it when Mr. Forge was talking about the, you know, hospital, because Dial Ride services a lot of seniors and, and residents who, who need to get to the hospital and other places, and your drivers, all your drivers are just wonderful, and it's always such a positive experience. So I'm very proud of our Dial Ride, as well as our fixed route service. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, Dial Ride, if we went back a slide there, was the one service out of the two that had an increased ridership, and it's very popular. We're looking to get some better technology in that system so that they don't have to call in for their rides. They can do it through an app-based service, but that's coming. Nothing imminent right now, but that's definitely in our future plans.
Yep. Councilmember Fagerin?
Thank you, Sean, and to your wow, 110 staff. I didn't know that we had that many in the City of Pullman. So amazing. Love to see the Public Works by, by numbers. And just want to follow up on Councilmember Waller's comment about leadership and how personally I believe leadership matters. What really amazed me is whenever one of those water main breaks, so I was reading about it right when it happened, you were on site, trying to figure out how to solve it as fast as possible. So I've heard a lot from my constituents on just how fast those water main breaks were taken care of. So thank you so much in getting those fixed really quickly. Along that note, you did have a comment on 90% of the water breaks were from cast iron. How much of the city's pipes are cast iron in total?
I don't have that statistic in front of me. That statistic exists, I just don't know it. I hesitate to say anything tonight, because I don't want to be wrong, but I will definitely send that back to the council.
Yeah, I appreciate that. It just worries me hearing that 90% of those breaks were from cast iron, and so my immediate question is, well, how much of that represents the total pipes of the City of Pullman? So again, thank you, Sean, to you and your staff. Appreciate you.
Councilmember Jalara?
Thank you for your presentation. I'm really excited about the bus, the new buses with the really cool decorations or their design, so I think that's really great. I do have two questions. One, I guess, is making sure that I'm understanding if this is still happening, but are we still hauling biosolids to Lewiston and Spokane? And is there any status on that?
We are still hauling to those two locations, Airway Heights is one and Lewiston is the other. We don't have any active land farmers that are willing or have come forward to allow us to land apply. If we did, then we would have to go through a process to test their land, to make sure that it was sufficient. That goes through the Department of Ecology, and then they would give us permission, basically, to, to do so at certain rates. We have to figure out what, how much we can apply per acre and things like that.
And my second question is, has there been any analysis around why ridership has been down since 2023?
There's a lot that could attribute to that. I could, I could speculate some. Some of that, I think, is due to WSU online programs, where as a student, you know, 10 years ago would go to campus, maybe go back to their apartment for, go back to campus, go back, and now they're only making one trip a day versus two. That's, that's possibly some of it. Another part of that is just the fact that people want to walk. I don't know. It could be anything. It could be a combination of a lot of different things. But some of the work that Wayne has done, we had a survey that was in the packet last week, that you might want to take a look out there if you haven't read that as well. There were some responses to that that may solve those. But yeah, I mean, there's, there's a lot of different reasons why it could be. No one, no one silver bullet there.
Councilmember Fagerin?
Apologies, just forgot one more kudos to give you, Sean. I know we talked about a lot about numbers, but I think what you did covering on the City of Pullman video about Pine Street, the Pine Street Bridge and the current status was 100% the right direction. I think we, as a city, need to be more, just brag about, just kind of the work that's been going on. I've had a lot of questions about what's going on with Pine Street, and so I think those are really effective means of communicating what we're doing, and I would love to see Public Works do more of that in the future.
Yeah, that was fun to produce. Megan Farren and I went out yesterday morning and recorded that, and we had, we had a bicycle rider just inside, insider baseball here, coming down the path from Porchlight Pizza, down that back path there, and zipped in front of us, right as I was starting to talk about the bridge moving and everything, and he stopped right in front of us and went, oh, the bridge is still dead, and kept riding. And she's like, well, I was almost about to put that in there, but I had to cut that out. But it was just, it was perfect timing when he thought he was going to turn and go up the bridge, so. But yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. And that's part of the goal, is just Public Works awareness, is to be out there. And that's part of the goal is just public works awareness, is to be out there, you know, like Councilmember Parks mentioned, is, you know, things are great until they aren't. And you don't realize what we have until something fails, and the benefits of public works has been, is there. So, yeah, I want to, I want to highlight that as well as the staff has, staff's been great.
Yes, I've also received very, very good comments already from the video today, too. So you, you're a star. And I think the nice thing about the video is it helped to explain that it's not the city's delay, it's getting all the permits that we have to get ahead of time before we can do the work. And it helped create that perspective.
Correct.
Thank you again for, for this presentation. You have the largest department by employees, and I think it shows in that way. I think the thing that is exciting also is as you're doing a wrap of 2024, you did, you talked about all these other things that you did in addition to what was going on during the downtown project. And the downtown project, you did more dollar work in the rest of these other projects than you did in the downtown project last year. And that just gives that perspective that the capacity that we are able to expand to by, by bringing in others to help us during, during that time period. So great job with the management. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you for the time.
Next up is the consent agenda. These items are listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion at City Council without separate discussion. I entertain a motion to read the consent agenda by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Jeff, if you could read our consent agenda, please?
A motion to approve disbursements for accounts payable, checks number 201130909 through 201130991 totaling $656,035.68. Item number two, a motion authorizing the purchase of a 2025 Ford Super Duty F-550 with a crane and service box for the Public Works Department Maintenance and Operations Division. Item three, a motion authorizing the city to enter into agreement with Paylocity for payroll and human resource services. Item number four, resolution number R2325, a resolution authorizing the mayor and the finance and administrative services director to execute a local agency agreement supplement number two for the citywide pedestrian crossing improvements project.
With... Are there any, are there any items that people, that anyone would like to be pulled from the agenda? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Second. With that, any discussion? All those in favor approving the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes. Next up is our regular agenda and the first one. And we have some great honored guests in, in the audience also to help with this. And we have Kurt Damon to talk about a very special donation. Yes, Kurt?
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, members of council. So before you this evening is what I think is a pretty exciting ordinance, which is accepting a restricted monetary donation from Eleanor McCloskey to be used for development of a memory garden in Lawson Gardens. You might be asking, what is a memory garden? Memory garden is a garden designed for people with Alzheimer's and dementia and also giving special consideration to their caregivers. Features of a memory garden is a space that allows individuals to enjoy the outdoors as well as stimulate the senses and provide therapeutic benefits. It's a place of peace and also provides important elements such as safety and features of interest. And that's only kind of the tip of the iceberg. We will be back sometime this summer to do a more formal presentation discussing the details of a memory garden. So at this time, I'd like to introduce former City Council member Sue Hens. Sue is part of the committee behind the memory garden concept, the fundraising efforts that they will be undertaking, and who would also like to say a few words about Eleanor.
Mr. Mayor, council, staff, and a wonderful group of audience members, possibly future candidates for some positions, and those out there in our airways. My name is Sue Hens, and I've been in Pullman for 55 years, certainly not a Pullman knight, but I was tried very, very hard to be one. I was also on the council, and I do want to congratulate you, compliment you, and thank you for your service as you continue on to do what our voters expect from us. Thank you very, very much. Now, today, I get to do something a little different. I didn't ask for any money, and that may not happen very often. But I also won't get in your way with a lot of numbers, and especially long numbers with hyphens in it. I am very privileged tonight to be able to officially tell you that we have given the city of Pullman $900,000. The "we" is a gift from Eleanor Florence McCloskey. The picture we see there, and you see, this woman arrived in Pullman with her family in 1947. She went right to Pullman High School as a freshman and right away was noted for her astounding abilities to play the piano. She did this mostly from her heart, but she was excellent pianist. And a very, very famous principal, Oscar Gladish, knew she was very good. When she asked if she could go home at noon hours and then take that next class off, it was an empty period, and to just practice more, well, Mr. Gladish, as many of you or some of you will know that he was Mayor Gladish also at one time, he certainly didn't get in her way of spending two hours more a day playing the piano. I do honestly have heard that he also was pretty busy during many of his noon hours because Pullman High School was just up the hill from a very popular bar that had pool tables in the back, and the guys had to unwind during noon hours. So Mr. Gladish was downtown a lot in Pullman, bringing the boys back to school in the afternoon. He was very pleased to have a musician to talk to some of the time. Eleanor loved her class. She loved the people at Pullman High. And if you ever take an opportunity to go take a look at Pullman High yearbooks for many years in a row, you'll see some astounding people. In Eleanor's class alone, Nora May Kiefer, our first woman county commissioner, was in that class. And a very, very favorite of mine, she was a student affairs director and YWCA advisor at WSU in the middle 60s and onward. She also became the national director of YWCA. That's Elaine Zachariasen. These women, part of Eleanor's class. And just because this gentleman was at that school, you can imagine a dear freshman really thinking a lot of that junior who happened to be playing the trombone, probably always in front of everybody that he could, and causing maybe a bit of commotion would be Wally Freel. She had some magnificent people to be part, be with. And those people have gone on to do things for the community that we are very, very grateful. The people before our Pullman High School graduates, some people that really worry about this community, and we see it all the time. Eleanor finished high school then in 1951, went on to WSU. She was a Delta Gamma. After she graduated, she went on and earned her doctorate at Columbia University in New York City. Both of her degrees teach right in the library science, especially student, children's literature. This woman worked very hard on her PhD and would go into the very, very scary parts and boroughs of New York City to talk to, ah, children. What did they read? I'll give you a clue, and it doesn't, it maybe kind of ruins the end of the story, but she found out that all kids read the same kind of material at the same kind of age. So her materials certainly brought out a lot of discussion during her time period as a scholar. She worked most of her life in Albuquerque, New Mexico, and directed the children's libraries in that school district. She came home, after her father passed away, she retired and just relaxed in Pullman, becoming part of book clubs, of other organizations. And she really enjoyed picking up the, and I quote, "old ladies" at Bishop and taking them out to lunch. That I can almost picture. That just is wonderful. This gift tonight, if you accept it, is the second one truly from Eleanor. 10 years ago, when she was, that would put her 82, she gifted through the Palouse Trust, Land Trust, two and a half acres. That is the property between Sunnyside and the hill that would be the backside of Skyline Drive. There's two and a half acres there that she wanted available, leave it as nature orders, and especially for children to run and play in, dig, dirt, whatever. But children were to be an active part of that. Now, tonight, we're able to announce for her the $900,000 that's going for a memory garden. Memory gardens are different. This will be something for everyone. Children can grow up in one of her gifts, and we all can take a part in this memory garden. Two important things about a memory garden: accessible and safe. This will be for all of our community, our family members who are becoming so that they need help getting places, those in wheelchairs and other kind of mobile needs. Caretakers, caregivers can have this area as a part to sit in themselves and bring their family members. And then for everyone who at the time is just feeling quite able, can just go there and relax and, and think about whatever you want to think about. Bring whoever you want to. Well, our, our gift tonight is the money. We know that the people, the fellow in charge will be hired soon. He is going to work with the city of Pullman to put together this memory garden, the only one in eastern Washington and northern Idaho named at least properly. This will be built properly, safely, and for everyone. But we hope to come back, and the "we" won't be me because it will be the people that can show you and tell you what this is going to look like. But at this point, we're delighted that we have the money to get a major start, if not completion, of this. And we have people already calling us, asking about how to make a contribution. It's, it's, it's the little contributions that we look forward to now because we have, we have the heart of the project. And now we can do for Pullman, really Eleanor does for Pullman, what maybe Pullman deserves, but it fits this lady very, very well. I have to thank, of course, Eleanor, and we do it often, also our city staff, Parks and Recreation, Kurt, everyone has smiled with the idea. We've been able to talk about it more and more and then begin the worry of finding the money. But we did not have any other problems beforehand. So, council, I have to thank you for your staff. It's been absolutely rewarding to get to put something starting, and we know the professionals will take over now and do for Pullman what will be very special for Pullman. I really believe Mr. Larson will love this feature from above at his gardens. Thank you, and I hope you accept it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kurt, did you have further? So with that, and we do also need to recognize Mayor Kiesling. It's great to have you here, and you've been a great advocate of this also. Thank you.
So I will be back to talk about it specifically in open July for the presentation and the rest of the day, just a group of citizens who want us to have them and to honor Eleanor. It's the full circle, her life here. And it's wonderful that as we come to Pullman, do our jobs, raise our families, now we can stay here and go all the way around because we're building this project. So see you next month.
So more, more to come. With that, any questions from Kurt, first of all, or so Councilmember Weller?
Well, I've already spoken plenty, but I just had to recognize, especially since I see my old coach, Sue, from comments, and Karen, of course, from different things in life. This is absolutely awesome. I have to say that as somebody who is a caretaker and having seen memory gardens in other communities, I'm so glad, and, and thank you to Eleanor and, you know, both of you and your whole group, which I'm sure we'll meet. So thank you so much for bringing this.
Kurt, I don't know, did you mention that this is located in Pullman Gardens?
Counselor Park?
I just want to say thank you to Sue and, and Mayor Kiesling and all the people who have, I'm sure, had a lot to do with organizing and getting this together. As both my parents had dementia and Alzheimer's, and so it's a very special project for me as well. So thank you.
Do you entertain a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Jeff, if you could read the ordinance?
Ordinance number 2511, an ordinance accepting a restricted monetary contribution from Eleanor McCloskey to the city of Pullman to be used for the development of a memory garden.
With that, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So thank you very much, and all of us, all of us have family members that this is going to impact or remember. So thank you very much. Next up, we have Clayton Forsman, our deputy public works director on the next resolution. So Clayton?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. Bids were opened May 29th for the citywide safety improvement project, and two bids were received. This project consists of two separate projects that have been discussed at previous council meetings. One is for pedestrian crossing improvements at four locations. The other is for intersection signal improvements at nine locations, and a project map is included in your packet showing all those locations. Both projects are funded primarily with federal grant money through WashDOT City Safety Improvement Program. And the low bidder is Colvaco Incorporated, and they're based out of Spokane, Washington, with a total bid amount of $1,663,313. The engineer's estimate for the project is $1,431,091. The majority of the increase above the estimate is contributed to the pedestrian crossings improvement project alone. So following the bid opening, staff reached out to our contacts at WashDOT, and we requested additional grant funds. And that request was successful and actually... And that request was successful, and actually a local supplement agreement was included in the consent agenda tonight to authorize that increase in funds. So based on the increase in funding, we are recommending awarding the contract to Colvaco Incorporated. And that concludes my presentation for tonight, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
With that, any questions of Clayton? Councilmember Weller?
This is great. Stadium Way and Liebecker, this is such an important one. The childcare center is right there. I nearly got hit with my dog just last week, and I tell you what, this is great. This is a great job. It needed to be done a decade ago, but thank you so much for doing this. This is awesome, and all the other ones also. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
With that, I'd entertain a motion for approving?
Move to approve.
Second.
With that, Jeff, if you could read the resolution, please?
Resolution number R twenty-four dash twenty-five, a resolution accepting the bid of Colvaco Incorporated for the citywide safety improvement project and authorizing execution and delivery of the contract for said project.
With that, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. Thank you very much, Clayton.
Yep, thank you.
And excuse me, next up, we have our Community Development Director, RJ Lott, for the next two. And with that, the CIP?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. This item on your agenda is the capital improvement program, six-year capital improvement program, twenty-twenty-six through twenty-thirty-one. As you recall, last Tuesday, we had a public hearing on this item with one member of the public commenting. I'd like to take this time, too, to thank staff. This is a very detailed, lengthy process that takes up a considerable amount of time. So I'd like to thank staff, like I said, throughout the city as an organization for their time on this. At this time, staff recommends a motion to adopt the six-year capital improvement program for twenty-twenty-six through twenty-thirty-one as presented. If there's any questions I can answer, I'd be happy to do so.
Any questions? Councilmember Weller?
Yeah, I know we had talked last time about the Welcome LED Reader Board and the questions around that. And I know I will be suggesting an amendment to remove that, because I, you know... My question was, I guess, what was the intention behind the reader board, so that at least, if I'm saying an amendment, that I can understand the purpose?
Yeah, the primary purpose was to help with communication with the community, to help get some of the announcements that we do here at City Hall out to the community, so that those levels of communication would increase. That was the primary reason for this reader board.
Did you have a location where it would have gone?
None specific. The primary location would have been somewhere between Main on Grand, south to Crestview, with no specific location determined.
Okay, and the potential maintenance, ongoing maintenance into the future, was that looked at as well?
It was, and I think that's identified on the project sheet.
Okay.
Maintenance and operations at thirteen hundred and forty-four dollars.
Okay, because I've heard that these can be a bit finicky and challenging for some, and add to some light pollution as well. So, okay, well, I appreciate it. I will yield, and then...
Any other questions, then? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion for approval of Resolution R twenty-five twenty-five, a resolution approving the six-year capital improvement program for the city of Pullman for calendar years twenty-twenty-six through twenty-thirty-one?
I am going to need to work through an amendment with you.
We have to start with this.
All right.
We have to put this on the board in order...
I will suck in with the intention to follow Councilmember Weller's amendment.
So with that, any discussion on this? And now would be the time, if you'd like to make amendment.
Okay, I would like to amend the CIP to remove the Welcome LED Reader Board of, remove the three nineteen, three hundred and sixty thousand.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
With that, any discussion on this? And Nathan, you made your motion, so if I look to you first?
Move.
If there's any...
Oh, no, I think there's...
With that, Councilmember Fagerin?
Just to comment, I just want to thank Councilmember Weller and Mayor Benjamin, just for the conversations that happened between this past week to help us reach the conclusion for this amendment. So thank you.
And Councilmember Fagerin just jogged my memory about something.
Counselor Weller?
So, appreciate it. Appreciate that, Councilmember Fagerin and Mayor Benjamin. I do feel, as the community has explained to us, that we do need to increase our communication, and it was in the priority goals or our goal setting. I do think that there are other ways that we can do that. I'm not proposing anything today. But in my opinion, few people are looking up at reader boards. There's a lot going on as far as writing the car, and many more people are utilizing, whether that's Nextdoor, social media, we already have those presences, presence, but maybe perhaps sometime in the future, we could have a communication or a brainstorming session about, you know, more push notifications, some other way. I just felt that that amount of money at this time for that project probably wasn't the best use, but I appreciate the support.
Other discussion? With that, we're voting on the amendment, so for those in favor of approving the amendment, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? So the amendment passes. With that, we're back to the main motion. Are there any other discussion? Seeing none, then the motion that's before us is approving the CIP plan with the one item that has been removed. With that, all those in favor of approving this CIP plan as amended, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That passes. With that, then RJ, for the TIP.
Thank you very much, Mayor. This item on the agenda is the twenty-twenty-six through twenty-thirty-one Transportation Improvement Program. This is a subset of the CIP, which we just heard a moment ago. This is due to the State Department of Transportation by July first, so we'll meet this deadline with approval here tonight. Last week, you may recall, we had a public hearing with one member of the public providing input. So at this time, staff recommends a motion that the city council adopt the six-year transportation improvement program for twenty-twenty-six through twenty-thirty-one as presented. Are there any questions?
With that, Councilmember Delira?
My question is, how often can the tip be amended before July? Like way before?
Well, at this time, it would need to be sent to the State Department of Transportation very quickly to meet the July deadline. So there are no more council meetings before the deadline, so this would be the opportunity to amend it.
Any other questions? With that, I'd entertain a motion for approval of the resolution, R twenty-six twenty-five, a resolution approving the six-year transportation improvement program for the city of Pullman for calendar year twenty-twenty-six through twenty-thirty-one.
So move.
Second.
Second. With that, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you very much, RJ. Our last regular agenda item, we have city clerk, D Stiles Elliott?
Good morning, Mayor, or good morning, good evening!
Oh, my God.
Mayor and council members, what you have before you is a resolution awarding a contract for legal publications. In nineteen eighty-five, Senate Bill Thirty-eight Hundred passed that requires the city to designate an official newspaper by resolution. In an effort to keep prices maintained cost, the city requests bids for legal publication. Our current contract expires on July thirty-first. On April twenty-first, the clerk's office mailed notices to the Lewiston Tribune, the Whitman County Gazette, the Moscow Pullman Daily News, and Spokesman Review. The Moscow Pullman Daily News was the only bid that was received. Staff is recommending accepting the Moscow Pullman Daily News bid to provide publications until July thirty-first of twenty-twenty-seven. And I'm happy to take any questions.
With that, any questions? If not, I entertain a motion for approval of Resolution R twenty-seven twenty-five, a resolution accepting the bid of Moscow Pullman Daily News for legal publication and authorizing the designation of the Moscow Pullman Daily News as the official newspaper of the city of Pullman.
Move to approve.
Second.
With that, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. At this time, I will adjourn the city council meeting and call to order the Transportation Benefit District meeting. And with that, D Stiles Elliott, if you could please call roll. I know you need to get stuff pulled up.
President Benjamin.
Present.
Commissioner Delira.
Here.
Commissioner Fagerin.
Here.
Commissioner Gaither. Commissioner Guido. Commissioner Parks.
Here.
Commissioner Weller.
Present.
Commissioner Wright.
So I'd receive notices from Commissioner Wright and Commissioner Guido that would not be able to attend. With that, I'd entertain a motion for their excused.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, we then move... I need to ask a question. Do we have final agenda item comments? We don't have a final agenda item, so...
The one agenda item is approval of the minutes.
One is approval. So at this time, we do asking for anyone who'd like to provide community comments on a final agenda item. Seeing none, we'll move on to the agenda. The first is motion to dispense the reading of the minutes of Transportation Benefit District Special Meeting December seventeenth, twenty-twenty-four, and approve them as submitted. I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second. With that, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That passes, and next we're on to Transportation Benefit District financial presentation. With that, Jeff Albrecht, our Director of Finance and Administrative Services and interim city administrator.
Thank you. What we're here tonight is really to just mostly share some information and kind of get some thought process going for the board. So what I'm going to do is just give you a little bit of history. This is probably more for public benefit. I think most of you are familiar with this. And then just kind of talk about potential uses and what funds look like for the Transportation Benefit District funds, so. So just a little bit of history on this. The Transportation Benefit District was formed by council resolution on April eleventh, twenty-twenty-three. And basically, the purpose of that was to create the ability to generate funds that can be used for transportation improvements that preserve, maintain, and operate the existing transportation infrastructure of the city. It is a legally separate district, but its sole purpose is to support city transportation, so very similar to our Metro Parks District, for example. Additionally, then, on September twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-four, there was the imposition of a one-tenth of one percent sales tax, and that took effect January first, twenty-twenty-five. So the three ways that, or two ways, I guess, with a contingency, that Transportation Benefit District can generate funds is it can impose one-tenth of one percent, it can do an additional one-tenth of one percent by vote, and there's also a tax registration on vehicles that can be done. So those are the ways council chose to do the one-tenth of one percent. So that revenue started being, or that tax started being assessed on January first. If you remember from some of our other discussions about sales tax, there's about a two-month delay. So what'll happen is, on January thirty-first, businesses where we met their sales tax to the state, they get it in February, and they give it to us in March, basically. So March is when we started seeing revenue essentially come in from the sales tax. So what that means is it'll generate about a little over four hundred thousand dollars this year, is about what will be generated from this tax going forward. Most years will probably be a little over five hundred thousand, depending again, of course, on sales tax collection. So that gives you a pretty good idea of what we're looking at for revenue generation going forward. So what are kind of the consideration of the use of the funds? We did not do a specific budget for these funds, knowing that they were still coming in. It was very early in process. The approval for the tax was kind of done after we'd already started the budget process. So a few things to consider is one, the current balance of revenue funds, including the Transportation Benefit District. We need to kind of maintain a certain amount of balance in there, obviously, to have the funds that, within the city, that it would go to would be our arterial streets, our streets, and our transit, basically. Those would be the sources that would be available for that. So looking at those current fund balances, you know, we're fortunate right now, our transit fund balance is pretty good, our streets ones is a little more challenged. The other thing to consider is the current state of transportation infrastructure in Pullman, so where are things lacking? And we've certainly heard some things about streets, and I think we have a lot of appreciation for what's being done in Orchard, and a lot of people talked about that being an overdue project. There is some transportation maintenance programs that have been deferred, and I'll talk a little bit more about those here in a little bit. I think one of the things that's nice about when you see a new tax as a citizen, it's nice to see a tangible benefit. Our park staff has done a wonderful job at Metro Parks, where people kind of have really seen that money do something for them, right? It's a real tangible thing, so I think that's something to keep in mind. And the last thing to consider is kind of hedge against potential changes to grant funding. And I have to give a lot of kudos Wayne Thompson and Clayton Forsman and Kara Haley and Valerie Weaver have done an amazing job about, I did a four-year average just to look, and over the last four years, our transit and streets funds are fifty-eight percent funded by grants, which is great. It's amazing that you get that money. The downside of that is, is we have full control over that, right? And those funding sources can change, and requirements can change pretty quickly. So while it's always good to have that grant funding, you always have to keep in mind that you have to be prepared to pivot if for some reason that that funding hasn't gone through. So those are just considerations. We're not looking to make any decisions tonight about what those funds would go for. I think those are just things that staff have talked about, and things to consider for future decisions about how that funds would be used. I did pop some information on the streets fund. The streets fund is probably out of the three funds, the lowest of the three funds for receiving grant funding. And I just did, these are based off the CIP that actually, and CIP that you just approved tonight, these are projected. And again, the only thing we really have approved tonight was the twenty-twenty-six expenditure, so twenty-twenty-seven through twenty-thirty-one are still variable. But this is what the numbers that were in that capital improvement plan. And so you see, they range anywhere from, you know, three hundred and forty-one thousand to as much as two-point-two million dollars in the future. And there is other funding sources, obviously, than Transportation Benefit District to support these. But if you look at our previous four-year average, we had averaged about six-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars. If you look at the next four years' average, that need is going to be closer to one-point-one million. So if we maintain that plan, and certainly project shift due to variability, the two things that we currently struggle with for funding our streets projects right now is staff time, staff's capability to manage projects, and then, of course, funding sources for those projects. And I will talk a little bit about, you know, our street maintenance program. Currently, it's about fifty thousand dollars a year. Realistically, I think if you ask our staff, that probably should be closer to two hundred thousand dollars a year in what we're doing. And that is reflected, starting in twenty-twenty-seven in the CIP, that level is what's reflected in there. And that had preliminarily been identified as possibly being supported by TBD funds. Sidewalks maintenance is another one that actually was put on pause for about three years. That program was, it's set to resume in twenty-twenty-six, so it is represented in the twenty-twenty-six CIP as a two-hundred-thousand-dollar expense every other year, but we missed kind of that previous year, again, for some of the things I talked about with funding and staff capacity. And so I... And so I think there's some real needs out there within our streets to really identify, you know, what's the best use of those funds. So I think, you know, a couple of things you can keep in mind. It's important to maintain a reasonable balance in that fund, just so we can deal with unexpected things. It is important to evaluate the impacts to the community, think about what really will have a good impact on the community, what will they see a true value for, for that increased tax that started in January 1st. Continue to monitor the maintenance needs, and continue to monitor grants availability. We're going to be having a discussion, for example, on some transit grants going forward of, you know, like I said, we've been extremely, Wayne's done an amazing job in doing those, and we need to make sure we can maintain those for the viability. So I think monitoring that grant availability, because that does change sometimes from year to year. And then identifying needs that are really going to give us some flexibility for change. So that way, if things like grants change or projects come up that maybe weren't quite as anticipated, we have the flexibility to address those. So again, just kind of providing a little high-level look, kind of what those monies kind of will amount to and some potential uses, knowing that will come forward at a future date, and then really start diving into what is the appropriate use for those funds. So with that, I would answer any questions?
Any questions? Councilmember Delera.
So I just want to know what extent these funds are flexible. Does a transportation-related project need to be in the tip to be funded by the TBD funds?
Not specifically. It would need to be, if it's a capital project, which not necessarily, so the Transportation Benefit District doesn't only have to fund capital projects, it can fund operations out of it. But if it's a capital project, it wouldn't need to be in there to use TBD funds, it just needs to be in the capital CIP or CIP as for the city as a whole. So there is some flexibility, depending on if it's operations or capital.
Councilmember Fagerin.
Thank you, Jeff. Excited to see that the revenues for that fund are growing. One question, just about kind of future authority about increasing revenue for this fund. Does council have the authority to increase one more 1/10th, or does that vote have to go to the people?
The second of the 1/10th is by vote of the people.
So a city has the ability to increase up to 2/10ths of 1%, but the 1/10th has to go to a vote?
Correct. Yeah, so 2/10ths is the maximum. First 10th can be done by the council, second 10th has to be done by vote.
Thank you for explaining that. Thank you.
And then there's also the car tab.
Yep, and then car tabs is another option.
Councilmember Weller.
Jeff, I appreciate that. And I know the rose was something that I was, it's very compelling. And I did at least want to recognize, there was a past council member that was very adamant about this, and I'm glad we started doing him, that was Brandon Chapman. So I did want to at least recognize somebody who had come before and laid that groundwork. So felt that was important to mention. Thank you.
Okay, with that, thank you, Jeff. So with that, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn the special meeting of the Pullman Transportation Benefit District, so we can go back to the City Council.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So we'll adjourn that and move back into City Council. The next item that we have is we'll be going into executive session. At this time, the City Council will adjourn to an executive session pursuant to RCW 4230 1101I to discuss with legal counsel representing city matters relating to agency enforcement action, or to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency potential litigation concerning, one, litigation that is specifically threatened, to which the agency, the governing body, or a member acting on the official capacity is or is likely to become a party; two, litigation that the agency reasonably believes may be commenced by or against the agency, the governing body, or a member acting in the official capacity; or three, litigation or legal risk of proposed action or current practice that the agency has identified when public discussion of the litigation or legal risk is likely to result in an adverse legal or financial consequence to the agency. While the provision of the Open Public Meetings Act does not apply to discussions relating to the interpretation or application of labor agreements, or that portion of the meeting during which the governing body is planning to, planning or adopting the strategy or position to take during the course of any collective bargaining, professional negotiation, or grievance remediation proceedings, or reviewing the proposals made during the course of negotiations or proceeding, the City Council is announcing its attention to discuss such matters in executive session. The executive session is expected to last, I still think 20 or 15. Let's go 15 minutes. If it becomes necessary to extend the executive session, someone will return to announce the anticipated additional time needed by the City Council. The Council does not anticipate taking action following the executive session. It's now 7:45, and we'll start at 7:47. It's now 7:45, and we'll start at 7:47. It's 8:02. Calling council back into session. Data entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye, we're adjourned.